So this last week has been insane in the newsweek. First Congress held a hearing on aliens where individuals testified under oath that the government has recovered the remains of non-human pilots in unknown aircrafts. Then we have Obama's chef, who mysteriously drowned right outside of the Obama residence in Martha's Vineyard. Then, of course, Hunter Biden maybe took a plea deal, maybe he didn't. It's still not really clear on that. Trump, of course, has been indicted again for the gazillionth time. Nancy Mace gleefully reminded us that she's a fornicator at a prayer meeting. Mitch McTurtle McConnell malfunctioned on camera for the world to see. Greg Abbott is finally making moves to close the border, or is he? And of course Bud Light is laying off hundreds of employees in what may be the biggest get woke, go broke story we've ever seen. All this to say, picking these stories for this week was incredibly difficult. So I decided to focus in on a few stories that are pretty important, but flew under the radar because maybe they are less glamorous. So on this episode of Forge an Anvil, we will discuss how parents in Tyler, Texas have organized a grassroots campaign to send explicit library books to city officials in an effort to create awareness of what local children are being exposed to. In addition to this, we will discover how Gabe Wrench won a settlement of $300,000 for being arrested at a Maskless Psalm sing in 2020. Finally, we'll discuss how the Trans Manifesto from the Covenant School shooting in Nashville may take up to three years to be released. All this and more, so stick around. Thank you so much, everyone, for joining us this evening. I am joined first and foremost by two first-time guests, the first of which is Sarah Fields. So Sarah, please tell the audience who you are and what you do.
Hi, yeah, so I'm a investigative journalist for The Publica. I'm also Director of Advocacy and President for Texas Freedom Coalition, which is an organization in Texas that advocates for the nuclear family and constitutional rights. I'm a Republican state delegate and I'm a mom of three. And yeah, we fight and one of our biggest fights is we fight to protect children.
Excellent. Well, welcome on, glad to have you. And for the first time as well, we have Ron Coleman. So Ron, same question.
Well, I'm going to give you a different answer. I'm a lawyer. I work in New York and New Jersey. My office is located in lovely Newark, New Jersey. I do constitutional law, it's free speech related law, intellectual property. I'm a partner with Harmy Dillon, who your listeners have probably heard of. I'm very active on Twitter with my handle right there in the name, @roncoleman. And I have a podcast of my own little self. It's called culmination, one word, it's meant as a pun, not as a nation thing. And I'm very pleased to be with you tonight.
Excellent. And monitoring your chats on Rumble and back again is my amazing co-host, Michael Aper.
Hello, friends. I'm a student of scripture. I want to see the righteousness of God upheld by the people of God. Plain and simple.
Welcome back, Michael. Hope you enjoyed your
I wish I would have said that.
Amen.
Should have said that.
Welcome in Michaela and Sarah on YouTube, as well as Connor1788 on Rumble. We appreciate you guys joining us. Let's go ahead and dive into our first story. Parents sending graphic gender ideology books to Texas officials in child safeguarding effort. So normally I have the pleasure of reading all of this article out loud to you, but tonight we are actually blessed to have the author of this article, Sarah, on the podcast. So Sarah, if you want me to read any part of this article, feel free to let me know. But first and foremost, do you want to kind of just give us a little bit of background on this?
Yes, absolutely. So this article was was written because here in Tyler, Texas, we have been fighting against our public library board for several years now. The parents have arrived there, they have spoken at the school, at the, excuse me, the public library board meetings and have brought up concerns over pornographic materials that were found, not just within the library, but within the youth section of the library. So this material was available to children. And there were certain books that were found, such as Out of Darkness, which is extremely sexually explicit, and All Boys Aren't Blue, which is not just sexually explicit, but depicts situations of incest and pedophilia. And it was, it's deeply disturbing and we have showed up several times and, you know, spoken regarding our concerns with these books. The problem is that the library board, save for one person, who's a very good friend of mine, actually, the rest of the library board is very woke and they take their, they look at their leadership as the Marxist ALA, because the ALA is currently being led by a president who is a Marxist, self-proclaimed Marxist. And that is who they take their marching orders from. And so this has been a fight for several years and at the last board meeting, it was incredible. The parents showed up in droves. I was there, so many amazing political activists, local political activists showed up at that board meeting and spoke about their concerns regarding the books. And the two books, Out of Darkness and All Boys Aren't Blue, were brought up and a vote was going to be held on whether they should be moved from the youth section to the adult section of the library. I spoke and my very good friend Kristen Bentley spoke and I'll talk about her in just a few minutes because the Dirty Thirty campaign, which is what we have started, the idea came from her. But I brought up the fact that if they did not listen to us and they did not do as the parents had asked them to do, that we were going to blow this up, that we were going to make this known, we were going to make sure that people outside of that local area knew about what they were doing and we were going to provide a solution and we were going to go above their heads until they did what we wanted them to do. I told them I had a large platform and I was going to use it because God gave it to me and I'm going to use it for the right thing. They halfway listened to us and only moved Out of Darkness and they left All Boys Aren't Blue in the youth section of the library. That was the final vote at the end. And it was very disturbing, including the fact that at the very end, you know, all of us are Christians. I'm a Christian. We, you know, as I said, I brought up God and I said, God gave me this ability to bring attention to this, so I'm going to use it. There was an elderly lady on the board who spoke up after the vote had already been taken, people were upset, the board meeting was just about over and she spoke up and she said that Christians need, ought to be ashamed of themselves for speaking up against these books. It was absolutely, to me, a very disgusting display of just absolute hypocritical behavior for calling out Christians for wanting pornographic materials removed from children's eyes. And so from there, we decided to go ahead and begin with Joanne Fleming, who's Grassroots of America. She has a very large organization here in East Texas. She, she's an amazing human being and under her, we have started this campaign called the Dirty Thirty, which is a campaign where we are going to be sending a dirty book to all of the local officials here in Tyler, Texas. So the mayor, the city officials, the, all the officials within commissioners court and yeah, we're, we're going to be asking for a public hearing and asking for it to be in the evening so that parents can come after they are, you know, finished working and come and speak their piece regarding the issue with the local library. And so far, the article that I wrote has now reached over 300,000 views. It's making headway.
Wow. Yeah, and you guys can check that out on thepublica.com. I highly recommend it. It's a great read and we may reference some of it here in a moment, but it's really unfortunate that you even have to do this. I mean, it's wild to think that these type of graphic materials are making their way into the hands of small children because officials in charge just don't want to listen to, to the constituents that they serve. And that's really just a shame that, that the one individual made a point to bring, bring your faith into question, or I should say slander your faith by saying Christians have no right to, I guess, be vocalizing against these inappropriate explicit materials falling into the hands of children. So that's absolutely ridiculous.
Was this woman's point of view that it was un-Christian of you to take this position? Or was her point of view that Christian sensibilities should not play a role in your having a position?
She said that we should be ashamed as Christians because our position was discriminatory against the LGBTQ plus community. That's, that's basically what it was because that's what they see it. They see it as
Serious theologian.
Yeah. My goodness.
The moral high ground is strong there.
Certainly. Yeah. Well, Ron, tell us more of your initial reaction to this story and just everything that's going on here.
Well, nothing really surprises me anymore, although I, I think that the, the effort that Sarah and her allies are undertaking is, is a very nice and novel one. I've been very familiar with this issue for a while because I mentioned before we were talking that my wife writes for legal insurrections. She interviewed Nicole Solis, who everyone knows is a very big activist in this area in Rhode Island. And I had actually Nicole on my podcast a couple of times to discuss what's going on in, you know, in, in the case where she was sued by the school district. And then the school district backed off, but the teachers' union continued her lawsuit against her. What did she do? She wanted to know what was on the curriculum. And she stood on her rights and she demanded that they tell her what the curriculum was and ultimately they sued her. So I've been all too familiar with this. I saw, also again, through my wife's work, got to know some other activists and I've seen how they will prevent people from, people at these public meetings, at these school board meetings or school committee meetings, from seeing what's in these books. So what Sarah is doing by actually making sure that the books really get out there and people have a real understanding of what it is that they're voting for because to some extent, it's virtue signaling. They're, they're not necessarily, they think of it as virtue, which no, no one in this conversation does, but they think of themselves as representing the zenith of tolerance. And it's important for them to understand what it is that they're tolerating because there is a moral responsibility when you're in charge of children especially, not to tolerate everything.
Right. And I, and I think another thing is that I think, so we've been fighting this for several years as well. And this method that we are using as far as sending these dirty books to local officials has already worked in the past. And I think that speaks volumes since it's already worked with the Texas legislature and getting these books removed from public school libraries, then we take it to a local level since it has worked before. And I think that's part of the problem is that we can work to expose this. I truly believe that's what God has commanded us to do is to expose this, as according to Ephesians 5:11 says, we're to take no part in these evil works, but we're to expose it. But I think that people are also so tired of seeing it and knowing that it's happening and not seeing any answers or being given a solution to the problem. And I think that's what's so unique about what we're doing and about what I wrote about is that it is giving people an ability to take action and do the same thing in their own communities, because this is not something that's difficult. You get a few people together, you figure out these people's emails, you figure out, you know, how you can mail something to them and that's it, you know, and start, and then once you have their attention, which, you know, it's pretty easy to grab someone's attention with these books, you begin to say, you begin to ask them, okay, are you listening to us now? Can we now have the floor? And it's worked before and I truly believe it's going to work again. I think we're on the eighth or the ninth day now. So, and something else I want to point out, and I didn't go into too much detail in it in my article, but I sent an email to every single city official here locally and I sent an email to all of the board members of the, the library, asking them, not only are you aware of this issue, but can you make comment on it? Because this is very concerning and, you know, everyone is very worried about this. Not a single person responded except for one, and that was my good friend that's on the library board. And she literally told me, she said, you're not going to hear from anybody. She said, no one, she said, I would be very surprised if anybody else responded to your email. So because they did not respond to me, that was very telling, that they, they are hoping that if they ignore this, it's going to go away and we're not going to let it go away.
Good for you. Michael, what's your reaction?
Yeah. I have a question for you, Sarah, and that's largely regarding how are these books introduced to the library in the first place? Are these library officials going through a vetting process and introducing them to the shelves? How are they being brought in to begin with?
So there are several different ways. One of the ways is that these books are being brought in, in bundles. And so some of these books, such as All Boys Aren't Blue and Gender Queer, which is extremely graphic, have been given awards. And since they have been given awards, they come in bundles of books that have been given awards. Okay, this is an award-winning bundle right here. So they arrive in a bundle, they purchase, you know, they, they get the bundle and they, they put it into, put, you know, put it onto the shelves. But another thing is that a lot of these librarians and those who approve these books, they know exactly what they're doing. They know what books they're, some, sometimes are requesting and putting into the youth section. There was also an open records request that was written, asking the library if any of these books had been flagged as, you know, explicit material in any way. And several other things were asked, but one of the, one of the big things to note is that some of the publishers of these books actually contacted the librarian and the board and told them that these books do not belong in the youth section, that they are meant for adults. And those publishers were actually ignored. So they know what they're doing. They know that these books are being purposely placed on these shelves for children to access.
Good grief. And for those who don't know, for those who are maybe unaware of those titles and maybe have yet to, you know, read Sarah's article, which I highly recommend doing, these books are definitely explicit. I mean, Gender Queer, it's, it's all cartoon artwork, right? But it
But it's depicting sexual actions.
Exactly. And explicitly sexual actions that I can't even repeat the kind of actions that are being depicted in this book on YouTube for fear of our video being taken down. I mean, so I can't even verbally describe it to you, what they're showing that these children have access to. So I mean, it, it's just wild. So, I mean, Ron, I think I should turn it over to you just to ask, like, have you, I mean, you work within the law field. Have you seen a lot of different cases surrounding this kind of scenario that's being raised? Is it kind of like a recent thing that's starting to trend?
So this is only bubbling its way up into, into the administrative, first the administrative process and then into the legal process. In Rhode Island, for example, there was a lawsuit that was filed against, against the school board. And as a general rule, someone tried to claim that, to make the claim that, which I think again, everyone here would agree is a reasonable claim, except under US law, which is that this is pornographic material. I think all of us would have no difficulty identifying this as pornographic material, but the only pornographic material that is not constitutionally protected is pornographic material that either involves non-consensual, non-consensual acts or children, or which supposedly has no artistic or literary value whatsoever. And there's a great deal of deference that's given to a claim of artistic or, or literary value. So it's impossible to stop this from happening. For all practical purposes, it's impossible to stop this from happening on a pornography framework. And that's because that's not what the framework was meant to, to deal with. As much as, as all of us would probably like to see pornography defined differently under, under the law, I don't think that's ever going to change. I don't, I don't think you can break, I don't think you can reel that back in. The astonishing thing is, sorry, Michael, you're probably going to say something that I think I'm going to agree with, but
Yeah, please continue.
But this should not be a matter of, of whether it can be prosecuted as pornography. It should be a matter of, won't adults, including parents of children that were in these schools, won't adults take moral responsibility for what's going on? Because there's, because the administrators, the librarians, the school boards and the parents have moral obligations and they have power and discretion. The mere fact that something isn't constitutionally prohibited doesn't mean that it belongs in the library. And, you know, as you're saying, Sarah, this is a decided choice that's being made. It's not accidental. It's not being made at the margin. It is part of a, of a nationwide effort that is being made largely through the American Library Association to, to damage the psyches and the, and the, and the moral framework of America's children.
Yep.
Mike, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Sarah mentioned earlier that there were some images and themes that were incestual in nature or even pedophilic. At what point does that stray into the legality of, of whether these things can be removed?
Well, if, if someone is writing about an experience he had and he wants to teach about it, he wants to explore the humanity of it. Again, from the pornography point of view, it's essentially impossible to, 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 it's not a matter of what's the subject matter. It's a matter of what's the tone and what's the purpose? And virtually all pornography is now made in a way so that it, prima facie doesn't fall into the pornography bucket. You have to be a really, 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 really depraved person to, and there are people, as we see unfortunately all the time, who are, to, to, to run afoul of pornography laws in this country. But again, it's, it's, it's entirely a matter of why are school boards doing this? Why are these decisions being made? Why are the publishers, who have every interest in the world, to promulgate what they publish? Being ignored. It's something very, very sick and something very, you know, very scary.
Yes. And Ron, are you familiar with Alfred Kinsey and the obscenity exemptions that we have in this, in this country? Because, yeah, and what you're, you're hitting the nail on the head, but also it's, they look at these books and they determine that they are educational in nature as they are looked at as a whole. And they consider that to be a part of the obscenity exemption, which ultimately started with the Alfred Kinsey era, where he tried to prove that all children are born with a sexual nature. And, and it's, it's disgusting. He was a pedophile. But that is where this, that is where a lot of this began. And so now we have states within the country who are trying to, you know, repeal the obscenity exemption. And we've, we've done so here in a way with the school library boards, but not with the public library boards. And that's, that's what I think our next task is, is going to be. And one of the things you, you know, you mentioned was why are they doing this? And if I can, if I can give a little bit of, in, you know, I, I think we all know a lot of the whys, but if I can also give a little bit of insight on that as well, I have a master degree in psychology and it is absolutely unreal to me how much of the science and the psychology of the development of a child's mind is being ignored. I graduated in 2014 and I learned about the development of a child's brain and male and female are significantly different from each other. Males take longer to develop. And we learn about the prefrontal cortex and we learn about the fact that the prefrontal cortex is suppressed when a child is sexually traumatized. When a child is introduced to sexual trauma, to sexual images, and now it's everywhere. It's on the, it's on the TV, it's in these books, it's in school, it's in curriculum, it's everywhere these children turn. No child seems to be safe without their parent right there able to determine what they should and should not see or read or watch. And it's very sad, but the ultimate goal, I believe, is to traumatize these children because without the prefrontal cortex, which regulates behavior and allows for logical thinking, which is, you know, if you really think about that, look at the liberal teenagers of today who are here with all the piercings and the crazy colored hair and they're screaming and they don't have logical thought and they're not able to piece together an argument. They, I truly believe, don't have the ability to logically put thought together because they have been, their, their prefrontal cortex has been oppressed in a way. And then they have their limbic system, which is the survival part of their brain, which is, you know, triggers the fight or flight and a child will forever see the entire world is dangerous. And that's how a lot of these children are looking at the world. Everything is dangerous, everything is scary, you're out to get me, everyone is out to get me. I am me, I'm my own self, and if you're attacking me in any way, then you're a bad person. And that's how all these teenagers are now thinking.
Interesting. We did have a chat that actually asked, what does the prefrontal cortex do? So if you can maybe give a little insight on that.
Right. So as I said, the prefrontal cortex is in charge of your logical thought. It is, it is, it regulates your behavior. It's, it regulates your critical thinking skills, your ability to look into the future, your, your ability to see a situation and piece together, okay, in this case, what is going to happen if this happens or if there's this scenario? You know, it, that's essentially what it is. And if you don't have the ability to, to access that, then, I mean, as I said, there are a lot of examples, as you can see, you know, people out on the streets asking people questions and they have nothing, they have no argument. All they can do is personally attack you and call you nasty names like transphobe and bigot and whatnot, which I get called every single day.
But let's take this the next step, Sarah. What is the, how, how do the people who are pushing this benefit from producing a generation of people who are unable to think critically?
Because anyone who is unable to think critically can be controlled.
And they, and they think emotionally, they act emotionally.
And go. And look at the left's arguments. The left's arguments are primarily emotional. So you see these emotional arguments being focused in on young voters too. They're constantly trying to, to lower that voting age on the left. And so you see young voters being targeted who are emotionally driven and they are being given emotional arguments. Therefore, they are becoming a very controlled and reliable voter base.
Right. Yeah. And if they can be controlled, then yes, they can be persuaded. And as I said, it's, it's crazy to me how much I learned in school about the development and how much of that is being buried. That so much truth, so much education that I have is not even being paid attention to, which is why honestly, at this point, I don't think I could even work in the psychology world. Because if I did, I would be going off of what I've actually learned and now we are living in a world that is completely, as you said, driven by emotion and not the science and not the facts.
Good grief. Well, Ron, so if, if some of these states were to go about changing some laws that would maybe create some tighter regulation around what we define as pornography, how successful do you think that would be realistically? How successful do you think that would be realistically?
Again, it can't be on the pornography axis because that ultimately is a First Amendment issue. So states have nothing to say about it. The only thing they can and probably should do is. And I think this is the sort of thing that I think to some extent Ron DeSantis has done in Florida. Is tighten up centralized supervision of local school boards. Ability to control these things. And of course, that's not gonna be very helpful in your really blue states. Where the centralized legislatures, if anything, are worse. Or no better than, you know, in New York, for example, and in New Jersey where I live. The northern and southern parts of the state are like two different cultures. In New York, it's the upstate is much more conservative, much more red. At least in those areas. People want to retain this sort of control that they have over their school boards. On the other hand. The New York legislature is now so overwhelmingly weighted towards the more heavily populated. Urban areas, especially around New York City, and around New York City, that the legislature there is. You know. It's like the California legislature. I mean, you know, they're just, so centralized control can be just as bad. So that, you know, what really has to happen, and I think that there's a very strong consensus among political activists. And Sarah, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your work demonstrates this is that it has to happen at the grassroots level. It has to happen at the school board level. Matt Walsh demonstrated this during the, when he attended that school board meeting in Virginia. Where they were talking about COVID policy. These people on these school boards. Who are taking these sorts of positions are not people of principle. They're not strong. They are not equipped to fight back. And they are not constitutionally, small c, able to fight back. What they get from this is, you know, is a little bit less obvious to me, but pushback tends to really be effective. Sarah, I was wondering, you know, in Tyler, which is interesting, Tyler is where I took my first deposition. Many, many, many years ago. In Tyler, is there. Are the parents generally supportive of what you're trying to do?
Yes, they are. And you could see it in that room at the.
And I would think that.
Yeah, I mean, we were definitely the majority. And that's what's crazy about this. Is there, I mean, and the more we expose it, the more parents we have who are just absolutely disgusted with what is going on. They just need the tools in their hands to know what to do. And if I may, and you can, you know, you're a lawyer, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But one of the things that was brought up in this last legislative session is that. A lot of Democrats actually made the argument for HB 900, which was the. A bill that went after the vendors, not necessarily the school libraries, but this is a bill that went after the vendors. That told vendors that they were not allowed to sell these books to the school libraries anymore. And that any books that were explicit had to have a warning label placed on the cover. But one of the biggest arguments that we heard from, especially from the Democrat side, was that this was protected under the First Amendment. And the argument was also made in opposition to that, that actually sexually explicit materials. That are being given to children is not protected, is not considered free speech. It's not considered protected by the First Amendment. Because we even have regulations already in place by the FCC. That does not allow sexually explicit images or language to be spoken at certain times of the day. And the entire intention of that is to protect children because it is not considered. Sexually indoctrinating children or presenting it before a child is not considered protection under the First Amendment. So we were able to shoot that down several times. And like I said, this campaign that we're using now locally, we used on the state level. And we sent a lot of these books to the legislature, to the Republicans and the Democrat side. But it's crazy because the exposure of this campaign was pretty amazing. Because we even had Democrats who, once they saw the books, were absolutely disgusted by what they saw. Including Representative Theory, who is a state representative here in Texas, who is a Democrat. And she strongly supported HB 900 and the ban on pediatric gender modification, which was incredible. She gave an incredible speech on the House floor and all the rest of the very liberal Democrats tried to cancel her. Tried to censure her, tried to remove her from her position simply because she took our side on this matter.
It's a shame. It really goes to show though, at the end of the day, that, you know, the quickest route to the grassroots is really affecting culture. You know, and that's why ideas can have some impact, you know, Walsh, you mentioned him earlier, Ron. And Matt Walsh's movie, What Is a Woman? I mean, that was probably, in my opinion, that was like one of the biggest game changers. Over the last couple of years, that's really shifted the narrative on transgenderism and just the sexuality movement as a whole. And just goes to show that you can never. Go wrong with trying to positively impact the culture, even if it's just one person at a time. And that will trickle on and, you know, maybe radicalize someone and you'll get another Sarah out there doing activism, so.
Sarah also said something, and you talk about culture in general, you know, about. How even exposure to sexual images and to some extent concepts, depending on the age. Is traumatic to a young child. I remember speaking recently about how. Our culture is so utterly saturated with sexual obsession. And we, you know, this goes back to something that what I maybe thought Michael was gonna say a little while ago. When I said, I don't think you can reel back in the laws about pornography in this country. And I don't think you can, because I do think to a large extent. You sort of have these infrastructure issues and we're not, we're simply not prepared to bust people's doors down. There isn't support for that, but this idea that we have to abandon the culture to what comes out of Hollywood. What's available on the internet. You know, to some extent, it's a blessing in disguise that we see this happening in the schools. Because it prevents us from kidding ourselves about. The degree of vigilance that we have to have and the choices that we have to make in raising our children. My children all attended religious and all my grandchildren are attending religious school. None of this stuff is stuff that we have to worry about. But I am. You know, very glad that. I have, you know, that we've made these choices. If my kids were growing up in this time and we were in public school and we knew this kind of thing was happening. It's hard for me to imagine that parents are letting this happen, but then on the other hand, it's hard for me to imagine that parents would let their kids. Watch the things they watch on TV and that they're letting their kids use the kind of language that kids use these days. So, you know, you can do as much fire and brimstone as you want. Every society declines, but you can make choices with your own family about where you're gonna live. And what you're going to expose them to. And these are going, these choices are going to require. Hard decisions and as a culture, we have trouble making hard decisions. We have hard trouble saying no to ourselves. But it's the fundamental responsibility of a parent to say, no, you can't eat that. No, you can't put your finger in an electric socket. And no, you can't have a smartphone. That's, you know, you can't have a smartphone, maybe when you're 18 and you're on your own, but my kids did not, none of my kids grew up with cell phones. Now, it's true, my youngest sons are 24, they're twins. They don't have smartphones now by choice. They're yeshiva students. In their yeshiva, it's not permissible to have a smartphone. In fact, they have phones that are. There's sort of a regulation, a standard of dumbness, so that they can basically text and not much else. They're missing out. What are they missing out on? Things that we, people my age all grew up entirely without. And that is somehow to flourish.
Right.
These are the harder decisions, you know, yes, we need to go into the school boards, you know, and we need to fight these fights in the grassroots. But we also have to, you know, ask, we have to make choices about what's happening in our homes.
Yeah, ultimately, the micro is much more important than the macro. Go ahead, Michael.
To that point, the parents that are listening, I can imagine the pushback to that argument is. Oftentimes, children that are in public school systems, myself included, I was raised up in a public school system. Because my parents were unable to either afford for me to go into a private institution or otherwise teach me at home. And that's usually where this conversation goes, is that our solution, the grassroots solution for our own children. Is to say, I will provide them with an alternative, but many low income families do not see that alternative. And I wonder, Ron, what would be your response to that sort of pushback?
I have a tweet that's actually my twin Pete, my pinned tweet right now, which I from time to time dig up again. And it wasn't because I knew that we would necessarily be discussing this today, but I discussed this very issue and I say. Disconnect your family from the public schools or nothing else you do to conserve your creator culture will matter. It's hard, it's expensive, but if you're really a conservative, it's everything. And that's from November of 2019. And there's been a lot of very interesting discussion that has come in response to that tweet. And sometimes people say, well, you know, Ron, you're a lawyer, you can afford it. We gave up a lot. A lot of disposable income. I mean, it's true, if someone's making millions of dollars a year, it's not a sacrifice. I'm not one of those lawyers. We also gave up a lot so that my wife would mostly be home. My wife has a degree from Stanford Law School, nonetheless. Spent most of the time when our children were young, raising her children. Those are decisions that we made. But what other people have said is that, first of all, there are extraordinary resources available for homeschooling now, which is asking a lot. I recognize that. I wouldn't be up to it, frankly. But people have said. Here's what we gave up in order to send our kids to religious school. Here's what we sacrificed. In other words, it's not only an option available for people who are upper middle class or well off. But it's a very, very hard choice. And the problem is, you could make, you know, even five years ago. You could say, listen, in the right school district, you can get these really quality educations. You're not giving up your child to Malach. You know, have a good home, teach them good values and they'll learn reading, writing and arithmetic in school. And what's wrong with that? You're paying the taxes for it anyway. What we see now is. The people that we have been trusting with the responsibility for our children. If they're even learning reading and writing, writing and arithmetic, they're also, I mean, some of this stuff is coming from the librarians. Which are people that parents never interact with. They're accountable through just the principle. Parents don't know what the librarian is doing and what books are being put in the library. But why should you even be having these conversations? And going back to, you know, what I was saying a second ago, children are not comfortable. You know, you ever, when you were a kid, you're watching a movie with a family at home, watching something on TV and all of a sudden there's a mushy part. Okay, and the kids start squirming and they're uncomfortable. That's normal. That's normal. And, you know, there are certain adults who think, oh no, they need to see this. No, they don't need to see this. Believe me, when they're adults, they will absolutely figure it out. I'm not talking about to regard sexuality as a sin or something to be ashamed of. But in our tradition, in the Jewish tradition, we have this concept of. There is a place for, a place for things that are special and intimate and personal. And that place is not public and that place is not, is not something to be, you know, to be shared. These are very private matters and they're adult matters. And I'm sure that all of you see it the same way. It's, you know, Michael, people have to, these people who are saying this, we can't afford it. You've got to ask yourself, what can you afford to prevent your children from turning into these freaks? These, or even being exposed to these freaks, who you see on TikTok?
Can I also just, I'm gonna throw this out here real quick. I've been homeschooling my children for years. And it was really hard, you know, as a single mom who was going to school. Getting my degree and working full time and homeschooling my children. And they were young children at the time. They're older now, but they were younger. I was struggling, but someone told me something that made a lot of sense. And it's so true now even, that if you sit down with your child, even for just 30 minutes. And you read them something out of a good history book and go over some math problems. And have them do a small writing assignment, even if it's just for 30 minutes to an hour, they're going to learn more, more than likely. In that time, then they will learn for the entire week that they would attend a public school. And it's so true right now, because we have children who are graduating who don't know how to read, they don't know how to write. They've been fully indoctrinated by left-wing agendas. And, you know, now they don't have the capability to even put together a thought process. In order to even write an article or an essay, you know, and then they're struggling in college. And so that really, that meant a lot to me and that really was impactful on me. Because, you know, I was very hard on myself and now my middle child, who's 13, just got into. A very, very good Christian preparatory school here locally. And they told me, they were like, oh my gosh, he tested very high, he did really well. And that made me feel amazing because I was like, okay, I wasn't doing as badly as I thought I was. But it honestly, it wasn't even that difficult. People think that it's so hard, but honestly, it's just, it's basic. Education, you know, it's sitting down and reading them from an actual, reading to them from an actual history book, you know. And not pushing ideas or anything, allowing them to listen to actual truth and. Come to conclusions on their own. And they don't have that in the public schools anymore. So that statement, to any parents who are listening, I promise you, sit down with your child for 30 minutes. They're going to learn more than they do that they would for a week in a public school, so.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for saying that, Sarah. And that was the heart of what I was getting at with you, Ron, as well. Is that you were discussing the difficult decisions that need to be made. And in those difficult decisions come sacrifices in order to preserve the intellectual integrity of our children.
Yeah, speaking of difficult decisions, I want to transition us because we got another great story to cover here. And this is, this is another story that is kind of focused in on the micro, but definitely affects the macro as well. So maskless churchgoer settles lawsuit over 2020 arrest calls liberalism a modern day cult. Idaho resident Gabriel Wrench was awarded a hefty settlement for his 2020 arrest during the height of COVID-19 pandemic. Wrench spoke out about his case Monday and argued his arrest was the result of liberalism and cancel culture. Wrench was arrested in September 2020 along with two other churchgoers for not wearing masks to an outdoor worship service. The three brought the lawsuit forward the following year alleging their First and Fourth Amendment rights were violated. The city of Moscow ultimately agreed to settle $300,000. I'm very grateful that I got a. I'm very grateful that I got a victory. How many people nationwide didn't get a victory, Wrench asked Monday on Fox and Friends? He explained to host Pete Hegseth that he believes the settlement is the city's attempt to pay off a massive PR problem. Wrench was arrested in the middle of a worship service. In a video of the incident, officers are seen taking a hymnbook out of Wrench's hand before leading him away in handcuffs. And you can see him there on the screen. The three were then detained for several hours. They violated my first amendment rights in a small town, he said. And I think really what you're seeing in the city of Moscow is a microcosm of what's going on nationwide. The city of Moscow is known as a liberal college town, home of the University of Idaho and an overall red state. Liberalism is really turning into a kind of modern day cult. They use coercion, they want power, and they have no real moral standard that is kind of fixed for them, he said. Wrench then called out the city mayor's for violating his own pandemic era mandates. Our mayor was breaking social distancing and masking rules. He went and played golf and drank beer with his buddies the day he shut down our town in March twenty twenty, Wrench claimed. He was officiating open door, excuse me, outside weddings a month before he had me arrested. And there we have it. And that's basically the, the super short summary of, of Gabe Wrench's story. Now, Gabe Wrench, he's been doing a lot of great things up in Moscow, uh, along with all those, uh, Moscow guys. They've been really, uh, making some some waves in the culture there in Idaho, but they are in a very blue college town. And so it was kind of crazy, the, the initial video that, uh, of Gabe's arrest went viral. I think President Trump might have actually, uh, tweeted it out in the middle of, uh, of the lockdown. So it was absolutely wild to see that this even happened in America. This was at a time where for me, I was just starting to really be uh, woken up about the craziness happening in our world. And to actually see um, a man being arrested for exercising his freedom of religion was absolutely mind blowing to me. I remember the, the sense of fear that overcame me in that moment. And I'm thankful that all this time later, I have actually, um, swallowed the fear and moved past it and, and tried to get active, which is what most of us should do in this instance. And I mean, major kudos to Gabe for having the fortitude to be able to go through this. And I think it's really important for us to even talk about this story because, uh, you know, everyone's focusing on aliens and whether or not they're, uh, they're real. But, uh, it's important for us to celebrate a win because it's very rare, or at least it, it seems very rare that we actually get a win on, uh, on the sort of freedom side of the debate. Um, but Ron, I wanted to turn it over to you to get your initial reaction to this article and Gabe's whole situation.
It happened, we got a settlement because it was Idaho. In New York, New Jersey, California, Oregon, Washington. He would not have gotten a settlement and in fact, he probably would have been convicted and sentenced. I argued in front of, um, a, a federal judge trying to get a, um, an injunction, actually on behalf of, of, of a group of, um, of pastors in Sou- in Southern New Jersey who challenged the COVID regulations prohibiting worship services for practical purposes, making them almost impossible. And we came this close to getting the injunction. We got a temporary restraint. We, 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 we did get in order to show cause and then the, the judge lost his nerve because he saw that the Supreme Court was not going his direction. That was before the, the change of personnel that took place. It's astonishing that he got a settlement. It's actually not a bad settlement either, three hundred thousand dollars. But it's much more important, obviously, from, from the, from the moral point of view. And you know, location, location, location. He was in Idaho. And the only reason that this happened was that the people in Moscow, the aptly named Moscow, town of Moscow, Idaho, um, thought that they were in the other Moscow. And, uh, they forgot that they were in Idaho. I don't know how many more Idahos are left. The states that were once considered to be conservative are turning purple and red. Um, going to my earlier point. But it is, it's outrageous and it, you know, it, I give him all the credit for doing the right thing, uh, and for sticking, sticking, sticking it out. And certainly his lawyers deserve. You know, lawyers, I, I will tell you, I, I have a client in a famous case who, uh, is a very big celebrity. And everyone is, you know, he likes to talk about how he won this case. He didn't win the case. I won the case. And he's on, and he's, you know, uh, so the, these guys, you know, they, they should, I'm sure that they're not even mentioning it in, in the article. These are often thankless, although in this case it probably wasn't thankless because there's a nice settlement there. But it, it's an important, it's an, it's an important outcome. You know, both on the COVID point of, on the, on the COVID piece of it, which was nonsense. Almost immediately, it was almost, it was obviously nonsense from go. And certainly on the first amendment point, outrageous at the end. And, and also very distressing how many law enforcement officers went along with this.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I wish that weren't true, but sadly, it was shocking to see the amount of blind compliance from law enforcement officers. Michael, I wanted to turn it over to you to get your initial reaction to Gabe's situation.
Well, I think it can be summed up. There's a sentence in the article. It says, Gabriel Wrench was arrested in September twenty twenty-two along with two other churchgoers for not wearing masks to an outdoor worship service. Which I think summarizes the situation and highlights the absurdity of it in its origin. The fact that that took place in the first place is, is horrendous. And he said something, he was quoted in the article, later in the article, Gabe said, uh, yeah, sure, it's, it's a small win, but how about all the other people that didn't get a win out of this and were otherwise uh, suppressed or, or manipulated by authorities. And more have we seen of that through Canada or other countries, even aside from the United States? We've got an Australian guy in the chat on Rumble who's been discussing some of the issues that he's encountered in Melbourne. But yeah, like you said, it's, it's good to get a win, but it's hard even for me to not feel like it's a small Band-Aid on a large wound.
Yeah. Sarah, what was your initial thought?
Uh, well, first of all, I feel like it should set a precedence. I mean, if he, if he, did he win this, uh, because he was able to prove that his constitutional rights were violated? Is that essentially, uh, what, how he won?
Yeah, yeah. And, and different articles covered a little bit more of, um, what the actual ruling was, but I believe that was essentially what it boiled down to.
Okay. So in my opinion, it should set a precedence. I mean, if, if, if he was able to win based on his constitutional rights being violated, then uh, this should, this should be true for everyone that has been arrested or, uh, been, uh, for wearing a mask outside. But can I, I just also want to point something else out.
But it was a settlement, Sarah. Then one of the reasons that, that you settle is to avoid a precedent being set.
Oh, okay. All right. I see. Um, but can I also just point something else out real quick? Um, Connor, can you bring the article back up really quick? Cause I want to point something out. Can you go to the picture where he's being arrested? Okay. If you look in the background, this, this is, this is what is blowing my mind. If there was not any other kind of, I mean, if this is not a message that says, we don't care about the science and we don't care about uh, your actual health, we only care about you doing exactly as we tell you to do. If you look, um, look at the amount of people outside who are not wearing masks. I, it, it's absolutely unreal to me. And I was looking at some of these other pictures as well, where it showed group photos of some, in this article, it showed group photos of multiple people in the, in the worship session, outdoor worship session, who are not, look at, look there. Look at how many people are not wearing masks. Why was he singled out?
Well, I do know that Gabe is, um, a pastor at, at the Christ Church in Moscow, and I think they may have been the ones that initiated it. So I honestly think this is one of the instances of they were trying to bring down, um, sort of the, the ringleader in this situation. I could be wrong on that. I'm sure, um, you know, Gabe would be more than willing to correct us on that front as he's doing kind of a media tour right now with, uh, with his settlement and he deserves it. Um, but
No, because if this was a matter of health, if this was truly a matter of health, then why was he the only one arrested? It's, it's, it blows my mind when I saw those, when I saw.
Well, you can see there was the little dots that they had painted and essentially the city painted the dots so that they can, um, do their psalm sing if they were to stay on those dots. And I believe, uh, what happened leading up to his arrest is Gabe, um, basically said that he's not going to do that. And I think he, uh, put his, put his arm around someone from his church while they were singing. And that's what, uh, that's what led them to, uh, take his hymnal from his hands and, uh, put him under arrest and take him in. And that's just insane that that even happened in the first place. But you're right. I mean, it's, it's absolutely not consistent, but the reality is, it's just a matter of it's, it's just them flexing what they can get away with, you know? That's what it ultimately boils down to. But yeah, I mean, it, it's just wild. I'm, I'm ultimately just glad that we saw some justice here because I really think that it's tempting in today's day and age to just take the black pill and, uh, uh, pretend that everything is, is lost. And the reality is, um, as Ron already pointed out, a lot of these conservative states are not doing a very good job being conservative, um, not being a, being very constitutional. Um, but here and there, if we, if we, uh, stick to our guns, we will occasionally see a victory and that's, that's at least some encouragement. Um, I want to jump in the chat. I think we had a couple of, of good chats here. Michael, did we have anything specific on rumble?
Not that pertains to this immediate context.
Okay. Uh, Devin said, Mr. Ron, I took down a plaintiff in a wrongful termination case. He got terminated um, for not responding to a call that Easter Sunday twenty twenty service was happening without masks.
So he got, he got terminated by the police department because I, wait, I took down a plaintiff. I'm a little confused.
I took down a plaintiff in a wrong termination case. He got terminated for not responding to a call that Easter Sunday twenty twenty service was happening without masks. Well, feel free to send us a little more details on that, Devin, because I'm sure.
I can understand if, if the, if the plaintiff was the one who was the wrong, wrongfully terminated. It's just like, like Devon is telling me the wrong side won. Oh, uh, okay. Uh, okay, I took down. I'm a court reporter. The plaintiff is Poe? Police officer. He's Poe, what do you want? Of course, he doesn't have a job anymore.
So she was reporting.
The plaintiff is a police officer. Right, okay. I took down. I thought that Devon was telling me that she was a lawyer. I, I took him down. I took down. She, she took it down in court. Uh, yes, right. In other words, he was, he was called to, 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 some, somebody was informing like they do in communist countries on their neighbors. And, um, and as all, as children have been taught to do in this country as well now, and certainly COVID was, was that experiment. And, uh, he was fi- and, and someone found out that he hung up the, I don't know whether it was dispatcher, or as you said, it was a police officer. He sat in his car and finished his donut instead of running to arrest a bunch of people for having an Easter Sunday service without masks. And someone complained to the, to the sergeant or the PD and he got fired because the brass in these places tend to be the most spineless. It's the guys on the beat and the ladies on the beat who tend to be, if any, if, if anyone has any druthers about this or any qualms about, about this kind of thing, it, it is usually not the brass, as we see in the Pentagon uniform services, I know it different from anywhere else. People who, uh, who make trouble, people who depart from, uh, you know, group things, don't tend to go very high up in the ranks. But yes, Devon, I, I definitely, I, that happened a lot. And look, uh, police, uh, public employees have very good benefits. They have very good pensions. And it doesn't take much to make it clear to them that if they don't do what they're told, that the deal that they made, which was that they, that they're gonna undertake potentially dangerous, uh, potentially, you know, life, you know, risking their lives on behalf of the public, uh, in, in exchange for, you know, very good benefits and, and, uh, you know, whatever else the deal is, that they're putting that at risk if they don't do what they're told. But you know, it's the same thing as we were saying before, you gotta make, you gotta make your choices.
Yeah. Absolutely. We'll move on to our next story here and it's kind of similar vein in terms of abuse of authority, or at least that's what, uh, some people are arguing here. This is from the Tennessee Conservative News. Release of Covenant School shooters' writings could take up to three years. And, uh, this is actually by Adelia, who's been on the show before, so shout out to you, Adelia. Uh, debate continues over whether the Covenant shooter's writings should be released to the public or not. After three adults and three nine-year-old children were shot and killed in March of this year. According to Metro Nashville Police Chief John Drake, the shooter kept a detailed map, known entry points, drawings of the Covenant School and journals related to the shooting. It's now been two months since the issue was brought to court and one lawyer has relayed that the case may not come to a close for another three years. Some of the organizations suing the metro government for a public records release include the Nashville Police Association and the Tennessee Firearms Association, TFA. According to John Harris, an attorney representing TFA, depending on the path the court cases takes, it could easily be twenty twenty-six before it comes to a close. The appeals court does not currently have a headline, a deadline, excuse me. Harris told Fox seventeen news that he did not expect the process to take so long. These cases were filed and we expected that the showcase hearings would have taken place as initially scheduled back in May, said Harris. Here we are almost two months later and the case is nowhere near resolution. In the initial aftermath of the March twenty-seventh shooting, Metro Police cited an open criminal investigation as their reason for not releasing the writings. But Harris does not think this reasoning holds up since the shooter is dead and there is no other person of interest. Harris is one of many who feel that the metro police should comply with the Tennessee Public Records Act and release the writings to the public. So again, there's more in this article that we can get into bit by bit here, but this is definitely a story that is, uh, local to Tennessee, but is incredibly, um, national at this point in terms of, uh, just the people have been asking over and over again, when is this manifesto coming out? And you can see that it seems they're slow walking it. Um, now, I don't know all the exact reasons. There's a lot of interesting uh, points to this story. For example, uh, the ERLC, which is affiliated with the Southern Baptist Convention, has seemed seemingly been a, a part of the, uh, the process of trying to keep this information hushed. Um, despite most people in the SBC probably being of the mindset that it should be released. Um, so there's a lot of interesting angles here, but I mean, the whole thing is unfortunate. We know that this person was a troubled individual and we know that this person was one of the first, if not the first, um, known transgender shooter. And it was a biological woman who was on some form of hormones, most likely. We don't know all the, uh, results of the autopsy. In fact, the article does say at the bottom that they did not actually scan for prescription drugs, which is kind of an interesting choice for the autopsy as far as that is concerned. But either way, I think this case is wild and the people are really wanting to see some transparency about what truly happened that day and what happened leading up to it. But uh, Sarah, I'll turn it over to you for your initial thoughts on just this whole situation and the manifesto potentially taking three years to be released.
Yeah, um, so actually I have a few things to say about this, actually. Um, when this happened in March, um, emotionally, it really messed me up, um, when this happened. And I'm sure it messed a lot of people up. But a lot of it had to do with the fact that I did a very extensive investigation on the Uvalde shooter. And with the amount of information that was buried regarding the shooter in Uvalde, it was very similar to this, uh, shooting as well. And that is the fact that both of these kids, which the shooters were, were kids, um, were very mentally ill. And that does not, uh, match up with their narrative. And so their entire intention is to bury any kind of uh, information that would make these kids look mentally ill, because if they were, then they would be uh, held accountable as to, okay, um, why did they not receive the proper care, um, that they needed as they were growing up? And in March, um, And in March, and as far as their agenda, as far as what they're trying to push here, I I actually tweeted something about this in March that ended up getting millions of views and I had no idea that it was going to take off the way it did. But I brought it up here and I said, when black people were killed, they flew the BLM flag and they used the blackout profile photos. When Ukrainian people have been killed, they flew the Ukrainian flag. When gay people were killed, they flew the pride flag. But when Christians were killed, they victimized the killer. They justified her actions by making her the seventh victim of her own shooting because of trans oppression and genocide. And that tweet, I think it it was it it had a very far reach and I think it's because I said the quiet part out loud. There were so many people showing up to protest. I'm not even, you know, school shootings, but they're standing there in in Nashville and in Tennessee and they're holding up seven fingers. And the reason they're holding up seven fingers is because they're saying that the shooter was the seventh victim. In any other case,
Does never happen previously.
Ever. Absolutely. It's never happened.
And the left is quick to jump at a school shooting and make sure that they're there in front of the cameras too, so.
Yes. And so if that doesn't tell you what the agenda is, I don't know what does. Here we go back to logical thinking. Anybody who thinks logically can see, holy cow, this is in our face. With the Uvalde shooter, I if you want, you can go look for it. I wrote an article about it way before I became a writer with the publica on my Texas Freedom Coalition website. And I wrote about the fact that this child never received the care that he should have received as a an abused, passed around child who was angry, who tortured cats, who tortured kids on the playground, threw dead cats at people's houses. I mean, the list went on and on and none of this was brought up. And it's the same with this with this man. That's the I guarantee that's why that they're not showing the manifesto of the trans shooter. And I myself have actually, as the president of Texas Freedom Coalition, I have written several open records requests to that police department asking also asking for records of the manifesto. And the response I kept getting was that this is still an open case. And I have a very good friend who is an attorney. And I actually have several good friends who are attorneys, but this one in particular, I was talking to him about the responses that I got, which the receipts I showed on on my Twitter page. And he said, this is not being followed lawfully because if the the shooter is dead and there are no other, you know, suspects within the case, then the case is legally considered closed. But they are lying and saying that the case is still open, which is why they are not sharing any information whatsoever, because they want everyone to forget about it. That's what they want.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, they are using this as a convenient foil to pass some restrictions on Second Amendment here in Tennessee. And unfortunately, there's a lot of sign that Governor Bill Lee, conservative governor, is supposedly meeting and doing some backdoor deals right now. They are they've called a special section session, excuse me, to occur in August, probably the end of August, and they're expecting that it's only going to be a day or two because it sounds like there's a lot of deals being made behind closed doors right now. So if you care about the Second Amendment, you live in Tennessee, even if you're outside of Tennessee, I recommend following Tennessee Firearms Association, the TFA that was mentioned in this article. They're actually partnering with John Rich and they're they're starting a campaign called Red Flag Down to stop Governor Bill Lee from passing any form of legislation that would be red flag law or, you know, red flag law called something different, which is what they're most likely going to end up doing. Because ultimately, they're unfortunately, they are they are taking taking the reins and they are using this as a great opportunity to pass some law that Tennesseans do not want. We are not quite a constitutional carry state. Some people think we are. We are. We are not quite there, but we have made some great gains into a legislation. And it's crucial that we don't get setback just because a governor who's going to term out, which is why I think he's doing this, now apparently thinks it's a good idea to betray his constituents and potentially pass some legislation that no one in Tennessee wants. So I definitely recommend looking into that Red Flag Down and Tennessee Firearms Association. And I'm sure John Rich will be posting all about that as well. But Ron, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you to get any of your thoughts on this whole story.
I think Sarah has some smart attorney friends. They this is there's a tremendous amount of arrogance on the on the part of government functionaries who refuse to obey the law, whether it's state or federal public records. They think that they we work for them. It is absolutely, you know, without knowing Tennessee law or what, you know, is there's no valid legal or public policy reason to not release this information. We see this happen also in Uvalde. We also see that this happened with the MGM shooting in Los in Las Vegas. There's stonewalling works when you're the government. Stonewalling works especially because there is so little incentive not to stonewall. No one's really ever accountable for wrongly withholding information. Look at the FBI does routinely withholding information with the worst thing that can happen to a government official who is found to have wrongly withheld information that the public is entitled to know is that he or she will have to let that information be known a year, two years, three years, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of legal fees later? If and if there's a penalty, it'll be paid by the taxpayers. It will be paid by by the by the people who are being protected and will be paid by the people who are protecting them. So this this is a major policy problem. And, you know, in general, we have a we have a problem with accountability in public life and government is too big. And it's, as you pointed out, it doesn't do what constituents want it to do. It does what it wants to do because it knows better.
Yeah, fortunately. Michael, what was your take?
Oh, what what Sarah and Ron have said is, I think apt. It's there's not much left to be said really, but it is preposterous to think that the three year mark is what they're projecting for the release of this information. And what Ron just said is that the taxpayer dollars will provide the avenue for them to to make that or postpone, I should say, that release. It's disturbing. It's disgusting. It's frustrating.
Can I also just say one more thing? It's also interesting that they're not releasing the results as far as prescription drugs. Because, you know, as you said, they didn't find any anything else, but they're not releasing the information on prescription drugs. This was a trans, a young trans person who was more than likely on cross sex hormones or puberty blockers. And though one of them is, one of the puberty blockers is Lupron. And these drugs have very severe side effects. And if they were to release the information on exactly what drugs this young person was taking, that would also give a lot of ammo as far as those of us who are against the the gender ideology, the transitioning of teenagers and young kids. It would give us a lot of ammo. And so it's funny how they're picking and choosing what they want released and what they don't want released because they know that it would be dangerous for them.
Yeah, and keep in mind
The they need to protect the transgender ideology. They also need to protect the pharmacology companies that are benefiting off of this ideology. It's a it's a multifaceted protection that is protecting evil that is in the midst of our country.
Yeah, and keep in mind that currently Tennessee is trying very, very hard to pass some legislation that would prevent a lot of these trans transitional surgeries as well as the gender affirming care that is taking place in in Tennessee at large. And, you know, they've been tied up in the courts with a lot of this legislation. I don't know where it stands as of right now because it's been back and forth. But I believe that, you know, we're making some serious headway with people like Matt Walsh has done a good job of bringing the national attention to it, but there's a lot of great individuals like Tennessee Conservative News and Tennessee Stands, Gary Humble, a lot of great individuals who have been on the front lines in the grassroots level, really pushing to get some serious change happening in terms of what the actual legislation looks like, preventing these surgeries from occurring in the first place. And ultimately, I think that if this if this manifesto was released, obviously, there's national implications. There are so many people that kind of want to say, aha, we knew it, you know, if this if this manifesto says, you know, I'm going to kill off these bigoted Christians, you know, to something to that degree, obviously, that's going to make so many people in in just the apolitical sphere, wake up to sort of the dangers of this of this movement. But then beyond that, if if they get a proper autopsy, you know, that's going to just give so much ammunition for these legislators that are already being hammered by their constituents, hey, pass this, pass this bill, pass this bill, pass this bill. You know, I mean, it's just it's just going to make the the success of legislation in Tennessee to ban this stuff. And of course, it'll spread from Tennessee. The the success rate is just going to go up dramatically if this autopsy can give any form of of legitimacy to why gender affirming care, as they call it, should be allowed to even be accessible to minors, let alone, you know, people who are above the age of consent. And so ultimately, I think that's really what they're doing. Sarah Joel in the chat said, similar to Michael, that's because they must protect Big Pharma at all costs. The reality is these transgender individuals are going to be permanent Big Pharma customers. You know, with the side effects that occur after after these procedures take place. And like you mentioned already, Sarah, you know, a lot of these drugs, they really do alter an individual's levels of aggression. And this was a biological woman that did this shooting and that's incredibly rare to see a woman be a mass shooter. But that's because this woman was potentially on a cocktail of drugs that who knows all the effects that it can have on a person's person's brain, a person's mental capacity. And Sarah, you would know a lot more than we would about what all goes into that. But obviously, it's 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 scientific malpractice to pretend that you can take all these drugs and nothing's going to happen. I think that's just completely unwise and anyone trying to sell you that is is just a snake oil salesman at this point.
Right. And they've already proven a lot of the immediate effects from these drugs and the short the short term effects, let alone the fact that there are no long term studies on a lot of these drugs. But also, I mean, you said something very significant earlier. You said that, you know, that they're going to be a patient for life. And that is true, whether they decide to stay on these drugs or they decide to detransition. They are still a patient for life and it's very heartbreaking when we were at the state Capitol and we heard so many detransitioners testifying about what had been what had happened to their body permanently mutilated because of doctors that and parents as well who had went along with the doctors on transitioning these kids before they were even at the age of 18. And it was very heartbreaking to listen to them, but now some of them are so incredibly mentally and physically destroyed. Will never look the same again. It was so heartbreaking to hear the things they were saying because sometimes they said that they were going to doctors and the doctors, some of them were actually turning them away because they didn't know what to do for them. They they're like, we don't, we've never dealt with this before and we don't know what to do with them. But these these forever patients are going to be forever going to the doctor and saying, please help me, please fix this or at least make me feel comfortable again because they, you know, infections are rampant and you know, continuous infections and osteoporosis is another is another horrible side effect of some of these drugs and bone problems. And, you know, how they are even able to carry themselves. It's very sad. So they are forever a patient, whether they decide to stay that way or detransition, they can never go back. And a child, a child does not understand permanency. So a child doesn't understand the effect of making a decision like this and not being able to go back.
The benefit to Big Pharma is far beyond the synthetic hormones that they're promoting. It goes, like you said, into the physical care that is required for the injuries that are sustained through the gender affirming care as well as things like antidepressants, anti anxiety medications and the slew of drugs that are required to handle the side effects of those as well.
Right. So for just throwing this out there, we will never, we will probably never know what prescription drugs this person was on. And as someone who has a degree in psychology, I learned I learned a lot about anti, you know, anti anxiety medicines and whatnot. And one of the none of the things we learned was that if you were to switch your drugs, one anti anxiety med to another too quickly or, you know, come off of one too quickly, you can it it changes your entire thought process. It can cause you to be suicidal and make decisions you would not otherwise make. And we will never know if that was the case with this with this shooter because they won't release that information. But that is definitely a a huge possibility.
Yeah. Sarah Joel in the in the chat said, when the Columbine shooting happened here in Colorado, they took down the two extra crosses that were put up for the shooters, rightfully so. I just thought we should go back to that because that's that's powerful, especially because Columbine was debatably the the thing that sort of set off the trend of school shootings here in America. But wow, that's crazy. Well, be praying for the families involved in the covenant shooting as well as the family of the of the shooter, because obviously we don't fault the parents. We have no idea what their involvement level was. We'll probably never fully know that story. Either way, pray for them and and the hurt that I have annoyed. I have no doubt all of these individuals involved are are going through. And make sure to get involved with Tennessee Firearms Association if you want to help put a stop to potential red flag laws coming to Tennessee by your conservative governor. So don't let them do it. Don't let them seize this as an excuse and politicize this. Keep our keep our rights protected. But that's pretty much all the time that we had for tonight, so we'll go ahead and go around the horn and and let you guys shout out your various projects. So Sarah, where can people find you to keep up with everything that you're doing?
Uh, yeah, so we're going to continue with the Dirty Thirty campaign and I have a few other stories I'm working on. You can follow me on Twitter at Sarah Is Censored or Instagram, Sarah Is Censored or Facebook, Sarah J Fields.
Excellent. And Ron, where can people find you?
At Ron Coleman on Twitter. Everything else I'm doing, I talk about on Twitter incessantly. So that's really enough.
Yeah, and check out the Coleman Nation. It's a great podcast. I really enjoy it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate.
Absolutely. Michael, where can people find you?
You'll find me sitting at the student center here at the school studying eschatology.
Excellent. Well, thank you, everyone, for listening, watching, wherever you consume our media. We really appreciate it and we'll see you next time.